Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Duer. Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. Do I have a motion?
Move to excuse Councilmember Duer.
Second. I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Duer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll turn it over now to Vice Mayor Garcia for this pledge.
Thank you. Could you please all stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could all remain standing for one moment, please? Dear God, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are of diverse opinion here, yet we wish to mend our differences and reach agreement satisfactorily to all. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerned. Thank you for your blessings. Amen.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Any changes?
Move to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have three sets of minutes tonight to look at. First is May 15th, which is a work session minutes. Any comments?
Move to approve the work session minutes of May 15th.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from May 15th as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, May 22nd, work session minutes. Comments?
Move to approve the work session minutes for May 22nd.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the work session minutes on the 22nd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, May 22nd, the regular session minutes. Comments? Motion?
Move to approve the regular session minutes from May 22nd.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from May 22nd's regular session meeting as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along, public hearing. We have a rezoning case.
Case number Z-23-1. A request, an application to request the rezoning of 1.383 acres from A-1 Agricultural District to R-1A, one-family residential district. The property is located southwest of 808 Alpha Road, further described as Book Six, page 25, parcel 74 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. All right, do we have an applicant present that would like to make a presentation? Mr. Kostler, would you please come forward?
My name is Mitchell Kostler with Kostler Engineering, and I've been working with Mary Beth Hosts, who's the owner. She's here tonight, so if there's any questions council has as we go through it, we can be happy to answer them. Essentially, it's just a, there's five different parcels that are somewhat irregular and some have frontage and some don't. And it's off, just off the Alpha Road, the area we're looking at is the lower triangle, A1 zone, and the lower triangle there. And so, we're going to, we're, our intentions are to come back later with a, to go to planning commission with the replat to reconfigure those parcels into two and to reconfigure it, just to, it just makes it more uniform. And the, we have to rezone that one parcel since it's agricultural to residential, so they're all the same zone and then they could be reconfigured. And that's the purpose of the rezoning.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, this is Z-23-1. It's a straight rezoning request, so unlike the PUD, normal PUD or something, there's not really conditions added to it. It's just yes or no without the conditions. But again, as the applicant stated, there's a, you see here on the zoning map, there's a irregular shaped A1 property, and the applicant currently owns five parcels, actually six, though also the one in the red hash where that's outside the city in the township, so can't really do anything with that from our perspective. But they own all five of those parcels and looking to combine that. But what we have is, we're trying not to create the same thing that we undid last year, which was have parcels that have two or multiple zonings on it. So we're requiring them to rezone that to an R1A. It is non-conforming right now because the minimum lot size for an R1A, or I'm sorry, A1 is five acres. So what the rezoning is, that will bring it into compliance because the minimum lot size for an R1A is 20,000 square feet. So it's compatible with the land use plan, which shows it as low-density residential on it and all the properties around it. And this would match the existing parcels in terms of zoning. So we went to planning commission last month. They recommended approval, and staff also recommended approval. I'll be here to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone present tonight that would like to address the, this application? There is, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we'll have council input. It seems to be quite straightforward to me, but any comments from anybody? It's just good cleanup, I do believe, so. All right, would you please read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 23-14. An ordinance to rezone 1.383 acres from A-1 Agricultural to R1-A1 Family Residential, further described as Book Six, page 25, parcel 74 on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio.
Thank you. All right, any further question or discussion? Do I have a motion to move this to the second reading?
No, moved.
Have a motion and a second to move ordinance 23-14 onto the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That's about as easy as they come. Thank you very much. All right, next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 23-12.
Ordinance 23-12. An ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council amending Chapter 96 Streets and Sidewalks of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek by adopting a new section 96.34, Obligations of Permits, Conditions of Permits, repealing the current section 96.99 penalty and adopting a new section 96.99 penalty to modify and update regulations pertaining to streets and sidewalks situated in the city of Beaver Creek.
Well, thank you. This is the second reading. So are there any further comments on anything or questions? Any upgrades from staff? No? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-12.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-12. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance 23-13.
Ordinance 23-13. An ordinance to declare certain city-owned property interests as surplus and to approve the conveyance of a water discharge pipeline easement on city-owned properties generally known as Rotary Park and the Creekside Trail.
Thank you. This is also a second reading. Any further input from council or staff? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-13.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-13. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 23-15.
Ordinance 23-15. An ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council amending Title 11 Business Regulations of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek by enacting a new Chapter 117 Short-Term Rentals to regulate short-term rentals in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Mr. Burkett?
I got shortchanged on that last presentation. I only got to speak for a minute, so. I can filibuster this one as long as you guys need. This, again, as the clerk read, this is a new chapter, Chapter 117 of the Codified Ordinances. And essentially, it's a new chapter to regulate short-term rental units in the city of Beaver Creek. Just a quick overview tonight, we're just going to go over the fact that there's a license required, there's some operational standards, and there's also correctional actions for violations. Among, those are the high points of the proposed ordinance for your consideration. One of the main things is that in order to operate a short-term rental business in the city, within 60 days of following this, should this be approved, is the requirement of a license. That goes with all the ones that operate it now and anyone in the future who would like to operate a short-term rental. The application will be run through the Planning and Development Department, and we'll be looking at general, general pieces of information such as the location, the owner, the emergency contact, just boilerplate information so we can have it all in a database. Also, on that application, I'll have to make some declaratory, I think that's the word, statements. Basically, I'll have to say that they, their property meets all zoning requirements, all building, fire, health requirements. And also, they will need to register with the Finance Department in order to pay the hotel motel tax that the Finance Director will be discussing here in a few minutes. Also, that that application, the license, is good for two years, and then after two years, they'll have to get a renewal. In terms of operational standards, among the most prominent ones is that there can be one renter per unit, and a renter has to be at least 25 years old so that we don't get high school parties or something like that. But also, that there's not an issue of just too many people, too many in a house, or unrelated individuals in a house, such as if you had a five-bedroom house, you can't rent it out to five different parties, each party occupying one room. That's a bed and breakfast, and that's something different than a short-term rental. Also, that there'd be no more than two adults per bedroom. I know that when we went through the work session, it was two persons, but in the interest of, among the discussion was in case there's a family that has a couple of kids and you don't want to split them up or have the ability to have your kids in the room with you if you choose, that, call it out as adults. Also, that a part of the requirements of the owner, operator, or host is that they have a list of information to provide to any of the, any user of the unit. So that you go into a unit, you are renting it, you know what the emergency contact information, you know what's expected of you in terms of excessive noise, where to put the trash that you can't park out on the street or in the yard or things like that. And also, there's some, if you violate those, there's some, there's language in there that offers us the ability to, you know, suspend your license or not renew a license, or there's ability to give fines, there's ability for criminal prosecution if that, if it would go to that. So the regulations you receive before you has standards for operation and the ability to enforce those standards. This being an ordinance, staff recommends approval, and we're happy to answer any questions following any public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is the first reading of an ordinance, so there is a public hearing. So if there's anyone present tonight that would like to address council on this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on to conversation. So anybody got any comments that they'd like to throw out? I know we reviewed this at work session, but that...
Yeah, but the one thing that I found is that on the fines, it was $25 for the first and $25 for the second, $100 for the third. It just normally just progresses. I'm just kind of curious if we're going to keep it that way or...
Randy, you have any thought on that?
I mean, that's certainly something we can, we can make it more progressive, it just, a lot of times, there's small infractions, so I didn't want to start getting big time until you get to the third or beyond.
That's fine. I just wanted it to progress, but I just was just curious why you chose that.
Sure.
Anyone else?
So the only thing I want to, that's not a question, if you're going to sit down, you're welcome to, but the one thing I want to make clear is that we did add language saying that you have to have a declaratory statement that you are not under any restrictions of your land use or covenants, so HOA agreements or neighborhood restrictions. I want to make clear for anybody watching that it is not the city's job, though, to enforce the HOA covenants. What this does is it prevents the city from overreaching. So if there is an HOA in place saying you can't do this, or a land use covenant in place, the city is not going to undercut that and provide a license anyway. If someone does provide evidence that someone is violating this, what will be a new code, that's a different story. But it is not the city's job to monitor your HOA.
Good point. Anyone else?
Yeah, I did, I mean, I just wanted to point out, I have this, I know it's hard to see, but this QR code, it will link directly to, if you want to email me, especially HOA associations, if you've got updated documents, because there's no requirement for them to send the city or the city to have those. So if there's HOAs out there that want to send me those documents, that QR code will link, you scan that, it'll send directly to my email. So I'd like to have those updated if you're out there.
Very good. Anyone? Do I have a motion to move this on to the second reading?
Your Honor, do you move that ordinance 23-15 be moved to second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 23-15 on to the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 23-16.
Ordinance 23-16. An ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current section 35.56 Hotel Motel Tax of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek and adopting a new section 35.56 Hotel Motel Short-Term Rental Tax to modify and update regulations pertaining to hotels, motels, and short-term rentals situated in the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. Mr. Burkett?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. This is the companion legislation based on the fact that you just approved the short-term rental ordinance. And what it does is it applies the hotel motel tax, the 3% tax on the transient stays to generate the revenue, much like hotel motel taxes for that particular activity. So it just, we had to add short-term rentals in there. Everything else is basically the same as the hotel motels already established are already paying. The only caveat here is that this gives us the leeway to determine when they report in. So right now, all the hotel motels do it every month based on the activity of a short-term rental. We can extend that a little bit, make it quarterly, so it's not as burdensome as for folks, because even if they have zero stays, they theoretically have to file. So again, we'll be adjusting that along the way as we look at the activity. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Questions? Please.
Just from an education perspective, how do you verify with hotels or motels or short-term rentals the number of stays, nights, revenue? How does that happen?
They send in a form, and that's certified by their accountant, their, the owner, whatever, and they indicate what the gross is, any exempt sales, and then what the base then would be on the 3%. And we accept that if we do have the ability in this ordinance to audit that. And we have done that in cases where we've noticed that, say, exempt stays has like increased dramatically. We'll go out there and they have to verify with us and show us the exempt form that has to be completed by the person staying there to make that exempt from the status. But we haven't actively gone out and audited the hotel motels. What we have is, we've been tracking it, you know, ever since this even started. So again, we know what the general amount is and any fluctuations. We kind of take a look at, but normally, as a case, we haven't gone out and done an audit of those particular. Again, if we were to do that and find that they underpaid or whatever, there's a provision in there for penalties. And again, if it, we find it's fraudulent, there's even increased penalties for that. So, but with the eight or nine that we have right now, we've just relied on their certification as the foundation for the 3% tax.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How do we notify these people that are using their homes for rental properties?
So the thought is, is that when Randy, the ordinance, that one and this one that combined are going to be in their 30-day waiting period, we would send out notifications, get all the notifications and locations that we are aware of, and send them the ordinance and the new hotel motel short-term rental ordinance to let them know what's going on. They also have to register with Randy, and they have to register with us for the hotel motel also. So there's like a dual registration. So again, finding the folks that are running it out, again, I'm sure Randy has a database that he can look at based on the common websites that actually list those, but other ones, I think they may come forward just from word of mouth or people saying, I think this activity's going on, and they would call us. And then, you know, there'd be some follow-up and code enforcement on that side to verify that they've registered, if that's actually the case.
You know, that's difficulty, knowing who's doing it. That's monumental undertaking sometimes to figure that out, so.
Right, and that's, you know, there's companies out there that you can actually hire that will do that for you. They'll scan all the locations and the websites to identify those folks if you wanted to. I think in the beginning, I think we're going to just try to attempt it ourselves, but again, that's a, that's an option that's available to us also.
Question, do we send notification at the end of the year about this tax collection, or is it something that they're supposed to be providing to the city? I guess I don't, I'm not really understanding how that happens, especially with these smaller entities.
So right now, the process is that during the month, anybody that has a rental that relates to these provisions would send us a form and the payment related to that hotel motel tax. What I did in here was I allowed for a variable option to say, you know, if you only have two or three during the year, we can make it quarterly, or you can actually do it annually if we so elect. I probably wouldn't make it that generous in the beginning, but I mean, that's, the bottom line is they have to comply with whatever that frequency is to send us the certification that either they had no rentals or they had one or two, and here's the 3% tax or whatever that is.
And we send the form to them?
The form is available online, and initially, when I send the ordinance with them, I will send them the form and then the exemption forms so that they have it. Again, that'll be the first notification to them, and then it's up to them to file those forms. But again, theoretically, they have to register with both planning and with the Finance Department about that activity. So again, we'll have a pretty good database once we determine, you know, who's doing that. And it's pretty easy to spot the ones that are, you know, soliciting to do that. So I mean, we'll capture those. It's the, you're right, the stragglers that we might not know about, that maybe they're not on mainstream, and it's just word of mouth or something like that.
Right, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, I would think that you would want quarterly, whether they had sales or not, just to maintain the registration with planning. Otherwise, they go through the, you know, when do you just terminate, terminate that registration with planning? And so that's kind of a way of saying, yeah, I'm still planning to do this, but even if I didn't have any sales this quarter. So I like the idea of a quarterly regardless of whether it's sold, whether it's revenue or not.
Well, it'll default to monthly, and then I have the option of allowing them to go out further and quarterly, you're right, was probably the longest I was going to let them do that. So again, they don't come back and say at the end of the year, yeah, we didn't do any of that. We wouldn't have that business anymore, you know, that type of thing, so.
All right.
Good point.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to move this on to the second reading? Oh, wait a minute. Did we have public input on this? I don't think so. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none? Now, is any further comment? Is there a motion to move this to the second reading?
Mayor, I motion to move ordinance 23-16 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 23-16 on to the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving right along, we're right to council time already. Councilmember Bales, would you like to kick us off?
Sure. Well, I want to thank the city for putting on a fantastic Memorial Day event.
Yeah.
It was a great event, and I appreciated all that spoke and participated and came out. Also, wanted to thank the Courtyard by Marriott for hosting the mayor's event a few weeks back. Another good event in a fantastic facility in Beaver Creek, completely remodeled and looks great. I wanted to congratulate the Beaver Creek Youth Softball Association for starting another amazing week, year of games. They've got over 1,000 kids participating, and just wanted to give a big shout-out to Bob and Vicky Darden for their continued coordination of all of those sports. And I was out there twice last week and look forward to another week on the Ball Diamond. I wanted to remind everyone that Flag Day is on Wednesday, and so I'd encourage everyone to fly their flags very proudly. And finally, I get to announce some employee anniversaries. We have Kim Edwards in Human Resources celebrating 36 years of service with the city, so congratulations, Kim. Scott Mulnir in Police, 23 years. Todd Snyder in Public Service, 23 years. Taylor Smart in Police, one year. Nick Cornet in Public Service, 23 years. Charles, Chris, excuse me, Chris Earls in Public Service, 18 years. Steve Croucher in Parks and Rec, 11 years. Edmund Ellison in Public Service, two years. Our own Debbie Haines, two years. Nick Coltrane in Police, eight years. And Frank Trimbley in Police, eight years. So a lot of fantastic longevity with our citizens, or our employees, I should say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, sir. I also attended the Memorial Day event just past Memorial Day, and kudos to Mayor Stone for putting on another really good show. It was well-attended, and it was a, it was a good...
Beautiful day.
It was a beautiful day. It really was. Had the opportunity to attend the Blue Star Families Museum Summer Kickoff at the Dayton Art Institute. It's a program that offers free admission to museums for active duty military and their families. There's over 40 of those museums in Ohio and over 1,300 of those museums throughout the country. I attended the MVRPC meeting in Vice Mayor Garcia's stead. Wasn't a lot discussed. They discussed a ride-share program information, if you need a ride that you don't want to call Uber, you can go to goohiohcommute.com and maybe connect with someone that will maybe be going to the same place you are. And they also discussed that you could get construction updates around the Miami Valley by going to miamivallyroads.org. Both of these websites are sponsored by the MVRPC. Green Cat's Public Transportation or Transit was supposed to get some ARPA funds, but ODOT stepped in and changed the rules, so that's now been changed. So they're going to have to go through a competitive bid for that. Helped with Safety Town a little bit last week. It's a, it's a great program in Beaver Creek. It teaches safety to kindergartners and first graders. Some of them can be a real handful, but they do seem to learn, because I've talked to parents that after this thing is over, they'll say, they tell me I can't go through a yellow light, and they say, put your seatbelt on, and so they're, they are listening, whether we think they are or not, so it's... I was able to attend the change of command for Major General Pringle with AFRL in Mayor Stone's stead. She handed the command over to Brigadier General Scott Kane, and it was a very nice ceremony followed by Major Pringle, or Major General Pringle's retirement ceremony, so I got to see two of those at once, so. Was able to attend a bike building... Was able to attend a bike building activity with Green Bucks at the Southern Ohio Brewery. We had, we gave away five bikes to special needs kids and one to a marine veteran. And if you've never been to one of those, I highly recommend looking at trying to find one of those, because it's well worth your time to go and see the smiles on these kids' face. And I had one lady come up to me, she said, this means the world to us. I mean, I asked her if her daughter liked her bikes, she says she'll probably sleep with it tonight, so.
Sure.
So it's a really worthwhile organization. I was able to attend the Green County Legislative Breakfast at the.
Christian Center.
Christian Center. Good day, Lord. Thank you. It's a great way to keep up what's happening in our local and state federal government. And then yesterday, I attended the Owens Place 5K, 10K race. It was a little wet. I got soaked, but there were still several people showed up, and it was, it was a good activity. And again, Owens Place is one of those places that if you've never been there, you really need to go and visit it. It's, it's kind of a special park that we're really blessed to have here in the Beaver Creek area. And on another life that I have, at the Wright Bee Flyer, our white bird is now ready to fly. We're up there, we'll be flying it at the airshow in July, and I'm looking forward to that. That should be a fun time. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. I was able to attend the last party on the patio. Mayor was there. It was a great event. They had music bingo, was really well-attended, the weather was beautiful, had a great time. There will be another one this Friday, so I encourage anyone who is interested just to get out. The food truck I heard was delicious. I am a big fan of hot dogs, so I had to have the hot dog, so very simple. But encourage everyone to go out and check it out. It's a nice way to enjoy the golf course, especially if you're not a golfer like myself.
June 16th is the next.
June 16th.
Yep.
That's Friday, right?
Right.
This Friday, okay. And then the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Carroll Park, I was able to attend that as well. It's right down the street from our house, and so my husband is a frequent visitor of Carroll. He is a disc golfer, and so it was very cool to see the new pavilion that they have and the new playset. What I didn't know until the ceremony was that the pavilion was built in a manner to replicate the barn that used to sit on the property, and so it was a tribute to that as well as the playset. You'll see it also looks like a barn, so very cool. And last, I know that Councilmember Bales mentioned Flag Day. For those that are interested, there is the annual Gene Fisher Flag Retirement Ceremony, and that will be on Flag Day, so Wednesday. I believe it's at 6:00 at the fairgrounds. A very, very cool experience if you've never been to a flag retirement. Last year, we went out, and it's, it's just tremendous to see the flags be retired in that manner, as well as the presentation that the county puts on. It's a really great ceremony, so encourage everyone to go out to that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kern?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the opportunity also to attend the Veterans Day program, which again, as I just echo what the other council members said, it was great. The speaker was good, and the weather was beautiful. It was just really great. Congratulations to the mayor again for another fantastic program there. Also participated with the Rotary Flags for Heroes, as they do each year, putting up the flags over on Behope Church property, and I think we got a lot of comments back from people who drove by and really were excited and really thought it was a neat, neat display to complement the veterans' program on that day. Attended the Marriott program for the mayor first Thursday, and she is a really a great manager over there, did a great job for everybody, big crowd, and just a congratulations to her and also to Mayor Stone on a good-sized crowd. Attended the Legislative Breakfast, also has been mentioned, over in Green County, and there was a nice turnout there and some good information, I think, which we all really appreciated very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Flash Mayor Garcia?
Yes, well, thank you to Councilmember Adams for covering me for MVRPC. I don't have much of an update. My family's been battling severe pink eye for the past two weeks, so we're good, we're clearing now. But I have not been able to leave my house in a while due to pink eye, and I'm just now coming out of the woodwork. So thank you again for helping me with MVRPC. I don't think anybody would want to be there. And thank you just again to our staff for putting together all this information for short-term rentals and hotel tax. It's very helpful for us. But that's about it for me.
All right, well, thank you. And it's been a busy week or two in the mayor's seat as well. In addition to the items you've already heard about, I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Columbus the past, this past weekend. Why they have it on a weekend, I do not know, but it was, that was where I spent my weekend. You know, this is a, they do a lot of good across the country. This is a national organization. I did realize by attending, there's probably not an organization that we, in our situation with not having a strong mayor, that we're going to benefit from a whole lot. We have the state organizations that are going to do us what we need. But it was still very interesting, and I'll have some more information to share on that later on. I attended on the way, on the way home from Columbus on Monday, I stopped by Wright Pat to attend the retirement lunch for the, or the reassignment lunch for the vice commander, and that's always a lot of fun at the club there. Also then went to the Air Force Museum where they open ribbon-cutting, so to speak, of a new exhibit, which is near and dear to my heart, but it's the Southeast Asia Search and Rescue. So it's the choppers and the this and that to go in and try to rescue downed pilots or soldiers that have been cut off from the, from other people. So it was quite a moving ribbon-cutting and a very good display for anybody that might want to go ahead and see it. That said, last week was D-Day, June 6th. You know, something that, you know, sometimes just passes through, and we don't really sit back and enjoy it much. But there's so much going on in our community and in this country that sometimes it's easy to overlook. And that said, I have a little statement I'd like to read, just to kind of set the tone for the summer. And as we begin the summer season, there are many celebrations of life, both here and around the world, and we face many challenges with those sometimes. Challenges from nature, challenges from viruses and other health concerns, challenges to our economy, and challenges to diversity. Challenges, challenge, challenges of society, societal mistrust. Mistrust of government officials, police, mistrust of the media, mistrust of elected officials, and sometimes mistrust of each other. Our biggest challenge is being able to realize that we all are much more alike than we are different. As we overcome these challenges together, your city, your police, and your elected officials are committed to providing a safe place for all voices to be heard, while at the same time, serving and protecting all residents of our wonderful city. So everybody, please have a wonderful summer and enjoy our wonderful city. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few announcements tonight, speaking of many activities out and information in the city. I'll start off with the electric aggregation, but I'll start by paraphrasing or stating that everybody should have received in their mail the In Touch edition, which this was on the front page, the electric aggregation program. So we had, did a press release and probably put out information, but now this is coming to light, because not only is it hitting In Touch, but the middle of this month, so probably this week and next week, you'll be getting mailers in the mail from the electric aggregation company, Dynegy, which on our website, we do have a sample of what it looks like. It has our logo on it, and it has much of the information as far as questions. It's the same, this is our third aggregation program, and each time, it's the exact same questions on the aggregation, you know, are there any costs associated, you know, what is the rate, and so forth. Again, this is all information that is on our website, and if you ever have any questions on, because I get it, believe me, with the other companies that are not our aggregation program, that are not Dynegy, they will send tons of mail, they will call, they will email you, all kinds of things, trying to, they know that this is our aggregation opt-out season, and they will try to get you to sign on the dotted line to change you from the city's program. You have that option if you want to go with them, no charge to opt out of our program or opt back in. Now, once you sign a contract with another vendor, you probably will be paying a penalty fee to get out of their program. So just buyer beware, and if you have any questions, please contact the city, look on our website, but always call us if you have any questions. We'll tell you the facts right up front. So, but a good electric aggregation program that is starting under the new pricing beginning in August, so look out for the opt-out letters from Dynegy. It will have the city logo on it as well, and give us a call if you have any questions. Party on the patio was mentioned, June 16th, so this Friday, starting at 6:30, and this will have a live music band, Bee Caged, will be performing Friday night. And then the last Friday of June, 6:30 to 10:30, we'll also have with music bingo by Off the Record Video DJ Service. Food and drinks are available to purchase both evenings from the Beaver Creek Golf Club as well as Kahuna Grinds and Smokin' Barrels food trucks. So I think we're going to have two food trucks at the same time, or is it one each night? You know?
Oh, they're going to be there both nights.
Both nights, okay. So we'll have, because last time, there was only one food truck, and now there's going to be two food trucks, so. Little, hey, it never hurts, right? The more the merrier on the food.
And hot dogs.
And hot dogs, okay. And hot dogs. Just and hot dogs. There is nothing like a hot dog at a, like a game, or one you can get, you know, that you don't make. It's just, they taste better for some reason, right? All right, public meeting, just want to advertise this out, Tree Advisory Board. There is, of course, we welcome people's input, and I've had counsel, or I've had the Tree Advisory, I've asked them to conduct a public meeting on this to gain public feedback for policies on their recommendations, the Tree Advisory's recommendation on the selection of tree species and planting on city property. There's a big discussion and very big controversy, very split on, you know, what is native, you know? Well, do we know if this tree's been native, but it's only been here 100 years? Was it, it wasn't native 1,000 years ago, you know? So there's a lot of controversy, but we want to have, take public input on this, afford the Tree Advisory to develop their recommended strategy on this. So residents are encouraged to attend Tuesday, June 20th, 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. This is from the U.S. EPA about Lammers Barrel Factory. This is another public meeting that the U.S. EPA is going to be held here in council chambers, but this is not a city, a city meeting. This is being held by the United States EPA, June 22nd at 5:30 on the cleanup efforts of Lammers Barrel Factory at the corner of East Patterson Road and Grange Hall Road. The meeting will be held in city council chambers, and the purpose of this meeting is to solicit public input on the proposed cleanup method for this property, and a formal presentation is planned to begin at 5:30, and representatives from the EPA will be available after a presentation to answer questions for the public. And so information on the cleanup efforts also can be found at the U.S. EPA website at the link listed below, and that's under the super, super pad. So any questions, please come, call staff if we, if you have any further questions. Neighborhood Gala. Beaver Creek Senior Center hosting the Neighborhood Gala, and that's June 29th, Thursday, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Senior Center knows how to party, so please join, enjoy the music by Band Five, a catered meal, and a chance to meet new friends, open to the public, and you do not have to be a member of the Beaver Creek Senior Center to attend. Register online, bevercreekohio.myrec.com. And the seniors do know how to party, isn't that right? Councilmember Kern?
I'm cutting a rug here.
Not, yeah. And this is new, brand-new for us this year, Beaver Creek Citizens Academy. In a nutshell, look, we're going to have six weeks of program that offers behind-the-scenes access to city programs and services. Our department heads are coordinating this by each talking about their departments, from public service to finance, myself. Communications will be one. Police Department, I know the police department has a police academy, which is an extensive program, but they'll be giving a snapshot, and chiefs, that may help you lead right into people saying, I want to go to the police academy, now that you teased them with some information up front. But this will be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., run through August 24th through September 28th. Classes at various locations throughout the city, like public service, will have theirs at public service, and that way, they can give them a tour of the public service building to see the equipment and the trucks. Free and open to Beaver Creek residents and business owners, so spots are limited. Sign up online, bevercreekohio.gov/academy, and we'll look forward to seeing you there and hope to, hope you can join us. Speaking of celebrations, the Fourth of July is just around the corner. Tuesday, July 4th, from 6:00 to 10:30. Celebration includes the parades. We'll have children activities, live music, U.S. Air Force Band of Flight. We know we like them. They are fantastic. Put on a great show two years ago. Plenty of food trucks, food trucks, and fireworks show presented by UES. Guests are encouraged to bring a lawn chair or blanket for seating, and still accepting parade applications, of course, and for more information, visit our website. And that is all I have tonight.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
And I'm going to use a little executive privilege and back up a notch. We all sat around here and talked about what we did all week, and we missed one. I know that Mr. Bales and I both stopped down at Rotary Park on Saturday to visit the Pride Rally, and it was very peaceful and very educational in my book, so I just wanted to let you know that that was, we had that in our Rotary Park this past weekend as well. So that being said, we would like to move on to citizen comments. Is anyone here tonight that would like to address counsel on any issue at all? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
We do adjourn, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.